Split of the city versus the utilities premium. And she said if you guys did decide to go with us, then she would give you more of a breakdown of it. So, would you guys have any questions?
Where's the sub prediction at?
She doesn't have it on there. Casey, do you have the numbers?
Yeah, I sure do. Let me just pull that up really quick. Seventy-seven something. Hold on, sorry. All right. The estimate for the utility is seventy-seven, seven fifty.
Seventy-seven, seven fifty, but that's not with the work comp, which is the other sheet that I gave you. And I do have that worked out here. The work comp for utilities was going to be $7,763 with a total of eighty-five thousand, five hundred and twenty-three.
Who says eighty-five?
Eighty-five, five, twenty-three.
Board members, any questions?
Guys, I wanted to say thank you for completing the bid that was asked for and loaded on you, man.
Oh, I appreciate you guys giving us opportunity to do it.
Yeah. Completing it and I apologize for all the emails last week.
I'd like you to go through the proposal for us.
Casey?
Sure, I'm happy to have you go through the proposal. If you got to page three or like, I don't think, Danielle, did you probably just provide the quote summary like I suggested? Is that right?
They actually all have the complete quote summary, so they should have page three as well.
Okay. So you'll notice on the quote summary, this includes the city of Stewart and Stewart Municipalities. Because you are one legal entity, you do, we can't separate out your coverage. It's all or nothing. So this quote you're looking at includes both city and utility. You'll notice that there's the lines that broken out by coverage limit, by line of coverage. Your general liability, for example, is a, what he says here, the $2 million limit, but then you add in the excess to all the liability lines. So an asset gives $3 million per line where it says $2 million, you add that excess liability line on and you'll actually have $3 million there. So you have $3 million limit for general liability, auto liability, law enforcement and public officials. That excess liability is that $1 million that we added to two above it. Vehicles is the coverage for your actual, the vehicles, the physical damage to those vehicles were above worth an auto liability. That's your actual third-party liability for all. Property is the largest line item you have and that is just over $25 million in assets, not including just under $2 million in vehicles for your fleet. And again, this is city and utility. We also have equipment breakdown included. It's the current $25,493,656 limit, which matches the property. And in the crime, we matched it to the crime that you currently have. And so we can, we could go through that coverage a little bit more in detail in a second. If you, if you follow that page down towards the bottom under excess liability options, you'll see that there are two options that we provided you just for, not to inundate you with options. We can go all the way up to $15 million, but we provided options for $4 million and $5 million limit. So if you were to want to increase your limit, you can expect the contribution to increase by those amounts. Moving on to the next page.
Can I just ask a question real quick? What are we comparing under general liability? I'm just trying to correlate this with.
Their general.
Because it says city of Stewart and Stewart municipalities consolidated general liability of $25 million. Is that supposed to be the asset value of what they're insuring?
Yeah, under, under property, it's not under, under property, there's $25,493,656. That's your limit for property coverage.
No, she doesn't have that.
Casey, you don't have one. I'm sorry. You don't have this page I'm referring to. So.
Oh, my apologies.
No, you're just fine. I'm just trying to make sure I understand what we're looking at. So general liability under ICAP says 25099 in millions, even though it doesn't say that. I would assume that's in millions?
No, that's your, that's.
Or is that our cost? Okay.
Yeah, that's your cost.
General cost. So what is that value of insurance or insurance period?
That's a $2 million limit for your general liability. So that's, that's, you know, if somebody sued you for certain kinds of claims, that's the amount per claim.
Well, the reason I asked that is there was a gap in what we were trying to call a value. So I didn't know. You mentioned something about a total limit for breakdown of $25 million. So where do I correlate that to in this comparison?
Are you on page three?
Yeah, that's a good question. So where you were looking at that 25099, that's a general liability. Go down to property and that's under, under that same area. And that limit of coverage next to property says 25,493,656. That is property limit that you're probably referring to. And further along in this packet, you can see how that's all broken out.
Okay, so under the, further down, it looks like the property coverage limit ICAP is covering is 25 million.
Yes.
Okay. And then the comparative value for EMC is 29 million, about 20% higher.
Property would be cheated high?
Correct. That's what I was trying to get at. And so the comparative cost for those would be where?
Are you asking where the differences are?
I'm just trying to compare apples to apples and the information I think is put together in two different ways, that's all.
Yeah, so I think probably what has happened there is that EMC provided increased limits on all the buildings. They automatically increased the limit, which is something that's only to keep up with inflation. And so I bet you that they increased their limits and we just didn't use those new limits.
So would it be fair to say if you increase those limits, there would be additional costs associated with that?
Yes. Okay, are you ready for me to go ahead or I'm sorry? I wish I was there with you, I would know. Okay. If we go to the next page, you see the limits broken out a little differently for the liability lines. And what that is actually showing you is your each line of coverage and it's adding in both your, your underlying limit and then your excess limit. And that doesn't really mean a whole lot to you. Basically what it means is, what it does mean is that you have $3 million in limit per line of liability coverage per occurrence. That's quite a bit broader than your standard carriers because you're not limited to, typically you are limited to just like a limit of $3 million for the whole entire policy period. And with ICAP, it's per line of coverage, per occurrence, regardless of how many there are in a given year. So there's no aggregate. And you can also see with the retroactive date that we're taking back coverage to uncertain lines of coverage that require it. We can talk more about that, we can go to the next page. I'm trying to keep it a little high level, just like I could get really nitty gritty on the insurance side of things and dig down if you want to. I'm just not, I'm not trying to do that, but if you have specific questions, I'm happy to respond. But on the property coverage, this is where I was talking about, that we have a little bit more broken out view of property. And after this view, we'll get to a little bit even more drilled down view. But this view shows you how much miscellaneous property limit you have. Miscellaneous property are items that move from location to location that aren't nailed down or don't, you know, permanently live at any location. So like, we're talking tools and mostly it's just tools that move around from location to location and don't necessarily stay in one spot where your tables and chairs and things like that, they do tend to stay in one spot. So we call those content coverage. But for this purpose, miscellaneous property are the tools or other types of property that float from location to location. Like $141,500. Under other building and personal property and following the next line is blanket building and personal property. The reason that these are broken out, we have, we have property that isn't under the blanket that is equal to just under half a million dollars. That 409102 is not. And we can look at that, I know why that enters. Sorry?
Nope, you just cut out a little bit, you're fine.
Just looking to see why, because I didn't notice that we have some property outside of, oh, there is. It looks like we have one location. It is 3225, 340th Street, Headwork. And that location is listed for $409,102 and it's an actual cash value. I can't tell you why it gets that way, maybe somebody in wife's that way, but that's why you see this broken out the way that you do. Is that's why we have your two different lines of coverage that show properties. So that, that other building and personal property is that actual cash value location. I just mentioned and everything else that's under blanket. And why this blanket is important, if you want me to, otherwise I, I think there's insurance people that it probably can explain it to.
So this includes blanket.
Otherwise.
This includes blanket cover.
Yes, sir. Automobile, physical damage, I should back up, just to make sure I'm clear. That one location we talked about isn't on the blanket and that is on actual cash value. If we can determine why that is, why is it on actual cash value, then we could probably put it in the blanket. But it's for purposes of this conversation, that's why it's broken out at this point. The automobile. $2 million in vehicle values and you'll see following this where those vehicles are and how much they're listed at. Total insured values are 27,492,366. We were talking about 25 million before, but that didn't include the automobile physical damage. So once you add in that just under $2 million, that's where you get your 27,492,366. Following that, if you just notice that there is equipment breakdown coverage included in the property. That is also reinsured by travelers like our property is. And we have a property damage limit matching your property limit of 25,352,156. And this is just really to try and keep as much apples to apples as possible. The next page shows you what I call a sub-limit or extensions of coverage. And so if you'd like, we can go through all of these. They're very, most of them are typically very standard to the market, so, but we can talk through any that you're interested in. The first two pages that we've just talked about, page one and two, that's liability, so that's your third party. That's if somebody takes action against you. On the next page, starting with governmental property agreement schedule of benefits, that is your property or your first party coverage. So if something happens to your property, that's where this coverage comes into play. And so you'll see that there's a lot of additional coverages out of maggot ICAP, a lot of like the liability. There's some extensions of coverage here. ICAP does a really good job of extending a lot of bells and whistles of property coverages that, coverages that don't necessarily add up to a ton of limit, but they add up to money to help when you need it. For example, lock the keys, you just don't see that coverage around very often. And that's the coverage that if, if like, as the example for the claim that we developed it under, we had a city vehicle that got stolen. And inside the city vehicle was a master set of city keys for all of the buildings. And we didn't have an actual lock yet, so rekeyed all the buildings. So we had to find a trigger for coverage, which we were able to find, but the, the point is that we now built in coverage for those kinds of situations where there is no cause of loss, like to be the last part of damage yet, we just knew that we had a potential. There. Instead of, instead of waiting for someone to use those set of keys to break in and steal things, we got this, this rekey all the locks and we built in coverage for that going forward. We found, we found the vehicle and recovered the keys, so that's good news. But in the meantime, everybody got locks on their, on their buildings. But you can still, you can see there through, we can take and choose if you want to talk about any of those particular coverages. There's a lot of extensions for coverage in there that's already built in to it. If you go to the next page, so that would be page three of five, you'll continue to see additional first-party property coverage. Extensions there and then following the next page is equipment breakdown and following the next page is automobile. Not trying to speed through these, I'm trying to be respectful of your time. Page 505 then.
I have a question here.
Yes, sir.
Under power generating equipment, you have excluded.
Yes, sir.
Now, we're talking about our two diesel generators and our wind turbine. Where am I going to find coverage for that?
Do you currently have coverage for that?
Oh, yes.
Do you have mechanical breakdown coverage on your power generating equipment?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, well, I need to look into this because I know we built in the line item for it. That was the holdup the whole time. So I hesitate to tell you exactly what it includes, but because I know that we added quite a bit of money in there for that exposure, I'm going to have to confirm with an underwriter. That does say excluded now, so I would leave that, that's what they meant to do, but I want to confirm with them.
So if, if we find coverage for that, is that going to be an additional premium then?
No.
On $8 million worth of property, you're not going to add more premium?
Oh, I'm sorry, misunderstood. I thought you meant for the, for the mechanical breakdown on the, on the power generating equipment.
No, I'm talking about the power generating equipment itself.
Yes, we, that's, the $8 million for power, is that already built into the statement of values? Because I think that's already in there, isn't it?
Yeah, it is.
We're going to go through, we're going to go through the statement of values next. And because I see generators on there and let's see, do I have to transform? Electrical system. Hold on one second. Now, this is a transformer, you have covered on?
For diesel generators and the wind turbine.
I know that we have talked about that.
I had to find out specific information on that, so I mean, it's probably in there.
But I don't see the wind turbine on the statement of values unless it's called something different than wind turbine.
No, it's on, it's on your wind turbine.
So we'll, we'll put this table together again. EMC put together information with ICAP and EMCDO. And then they put a bullet point at the bottom that says this does not include the wind turbine, 724 Southwest 8.
Yeah, I didn't find it either. I looked through here and didn't find that location. Or when I did, it was a very small one of coverage.
Are you, do you, are, you, you found, did you find a wind turbine on your statement of values for EMC?
On EMC, yeah.
It's down there, is it a new location?
Been there years and years.
Commercial output number three.
You guys all have it?
Yeah.
Okay. Ash, you might read it to me what that last. This is from EMC.
I don't know, maybe EMC can explain.
They said, they said this does not include the wind turbine at 724 Southwest 8, valuation is 1.2 billion. Nor the filter house at 114 Fremont Street, building valuation of 2.1 million.
Actually, I put that table together because I was just comparing them and trying to make it easier for everybody rather than fumbling through all these policies to just see in one clean piece of paper what all the different coverages were for all the different policies.
And on the, on the commercial output statement of values, location number three, 724 Southwest 8, electric generating wind turbine.
Oh, I see.
Item just above it is electric generating substation. That's the diesel, the cat generators.
Yeah, and if you look on ours, it's page 26 of the packet. It's under statement of values, starting at page 14 of 16. That's where the electric generating is starting on our coverage. And I see, I see electric generating, let's see, one, two, three, generating building and electrical components. But you know what I don't see is a wind turbine. So unless it's stuck in this electrical generating bucket on page, starting on page 14, are any of those addresses right for the wind turbine?
Number 21.
21.
724. 724, 724, Southwest 7, that's.
Casey, can you tell us what the total bid was? Was it 185? That was property or everything but work comp?
180, that's correct, yes.
Okay, and then what was work comp?
Work comp was.
For ours, you said it was 7763.
Looks like it's 34,639.
Well, that's for, that's for the entire policy.
Yes.
For the split out, you said for our utilities, it's 7763.
Work comp, yeah, 7763.
Okay, so your total number is, 185, is that 220?
21971.
Okay, so 220. And then what was EMC's total bid?
118.
Okay, well, I thought, I thought the utilities was 86 and the cities was 125?
112, 123, and 86. For the.
12530.
125, what does it say?
So 125, 122.
How does that happen?
You don't know that in the evening.
So that's a change, you guys haven't looked at yet.
The evening wise.
Okay.
The evening wise, 125, 122.
Okay, I'm just trying to look at apples to apples. All of total cost, status quo. You're at 219 for ICAP and EMC is a. 190.
This is what you're doing now.
So there's a 10% difference in the cost. ICAP is higher and that's where that stuff sits. You can't do utilities without the city. So you can't look at it one sided, which is why you're trying to do a joint meeting, correct?
Correct.
Um, anyway, I'm not trying to, trying to draw this to a nutshell, but I mean.
I see a point.
Yeah. Thank you very much for all of the work and sticking with the bid and sticking with, you know, we had asked you to pull it up.
Yeah.
And there was a ton of work to do this and both folks have done everything they can to do that or pull it all together, so.
Yep. Well, that's work, glad to do it.
I mean, I, you guys have more questions? This stuff's beyond me, I don't, I can't tie it back together and un moving parts. I'm just trying to look at what's the cost of the utility cost.
Well, I have, I have some more questions. Do you guys have any more questions? I noticed here, and I've done what I can to compare the, both the statements of values here, but on, on page 16 of, 16 of 66, I believe that's on the, no, that's on United Risk. There's an item there for a filter house. I believe it's this filter house that sits right back here. The limit we have on the EMC policy is $2170,000. Same statement of values on the ICAP has that value at 16,474. And that's on your page 13 of 16.
I, I, well, I kind of missed, we'll see. I see a pump house. I don't really understand what your question is. Why is, why did we not use the same limit?
Just above that, just above that, it's the filter house that I'm talking about. Page 13, page 13 or 16.
Item number 18.
EMC has that, but 2170,000, and I think you reviewed that, didn't you, Pat?
We do.
And you have the value at 16,474.
You know, I, 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 I'm happy to dissect this with you, but I probably have to look at what you're looking at and have all, have my underwriter on the phone too, because, I mean, I think what I would do if I were you is, is look at the total limit. Like, it looks, it sounded like one of the, another one of you were doing and looking at the total. Because whether or however it's distributed amongst buildings, it really doesn't matter as much as what your total blanket is. And it sounds like EMC's got $4 million more limit on that than I, than we do. So that's, that's where I would say. I'd have to go back to the drawing board and, and get $4 million of the coverage for you. We could definitely do that and then I think that you wouldn't find the discrepancies that you are, but, you know, we really, we had, it was an uphill battle of getting information. I would say that we were really lucky to get to this point. So I don't think it's worth your time to dissect the locations and compare neck and neck because it doesn't sound like they're going to compare the same meaningful for you. We can go back and find $4 million of coverage, but it doesn't sound like it might be something you want to discuss anyway.
Okay, next question. I have a real concern, because I think one of the hottest items right now in the insurance market is cyber coverage. You guys provide us with $250,000 in cyber coverage and the current policy we have is a million limit. And I'm very concerned that, I think, I think we need to understand what, why that coverage is there and where it came from. And it actually came from a statute. The state of Iowa created that coverage by saying that if a, if a municipality or a local government gets hacked, has a cyber liability loss, the first thing they have to do is go hire a lawyer. And they have to create a, they have to write a letter that is mailed to each and every customer on our customer list, telling them what happened and. That happens, that has to go to every, every one of our customers. From, from that point on, then you need to hire a forensic IT guy. And he has to go through our system and find out how we got hacked. Who hacked it and how did they do it? And then he has to go fix it. And then he has to go fix it. And then the last thing is you have to hire the lawyer because you're certainly gonna probably get sued some. Maybe several times. Certainly more than you want to get sued. But I'm guessing that, and this is just my guess, is that the, the legal fees for that are gonna be 250,000. I'm not sure a million dollars is enough coverage for, for that kind of cyber liability. So I'm very concerned that we don't have adequate coverage in the ICAP quota then.
Casey, have you had claim problems with that?
Uh, well, I, it's, I, I guess I need more clarification because John keeps mentioning cyber liability. Well, there's a difference between cyber liability coverage and cyber breach notification for cyber coverage. And so I do, I actually teach classes on, on cyber liability and how to mitigate loss. So I'm really well aware of what you're saying. But cyber liability in the last few years has become very difficult to, well, cyber breach. Very difficult to purchase. And your type of, so if somebody sees you because you didn't do something right, you, you have $3 million cyber liability. You're probably talking about cyber breach notification. And that's where we're limited to 250,000. And I would say you're probably right that that's not enough. But frankly, you look for cyber liability coverage and it's really difficult to find a million dollars. So we could, I could give you a million dollar cyber breach coverage and add it on to this. And we could take away the ICAP of cyber breach. And so we could definitely do that. But we're, we're, we're talking minimal dollar change. And I mean, I would right there from CFP, which is the carrier that they provided you a million dollars of coverage. I could get that myself. So like if you, if you wanted that quote, we could definitely provide it.
Okay.
It doesn't sound like, frankly, John, it doesn't, this is gonna be like, are these things meaningful to, to you to make the change? Because it doesn't sound like you're interested in making the change.
Well, we'll find that out here in a little bit. But I guess a statement you made at the very beginning, Casey, is that you have to insure us as one entity. We are not one entity.
You're legally one entity according to the thing I've seen, is that you're legally one entity. If that's not true, we can definitely separate it. But from, from everything I've heard, you have the same DIN. Is that not accurate?
We don't have the same DIN, do we? BIS?
We do? Okay, well, I know, so we are one entity, Casey, from...
So why wouldn't you want to make it as one? I mean, it seems to me if you put that into two policies, that you're, you're losing out on some, like you're providing some gaps where if you had it all under one, you wouldn't have any gaps.
No.
I mean, you shouldn't have as many anyways.
I'm, I'm disagreeing mainly because if we had, if we had a loss where both of us were brought into the, into the, into the case, the utilities has one limit and the city would have another limit. And putting us both under one limit limits the amount of coverage we have. It's the same thing with, with a pool program. You know, we're adding our, we're gonna take our very low loss ratios. We don't have many losses here. We're adding them in with all these other municipalities that have, may have worse losses than we do and cause, and cause us to dilute the, the good coverage that we have now, the good loss ratio that we have now. That concerns me.
Well, you're in a safety group now, so that's not really true because you're in a safety group and you're sharing experience that way. So I mean, that's not exactly true. John, how can I help you? Like what do you, what do you need to hear?
I, I guess it comes back to one of the things that, that makes me feel the way I do here is years and years ago, when I was doing this, and thank God I'm not anymore, but years and years ago, when I was doing this, I made the presentation to the city council and to the utilities for both of these programs, for both EMC and the ICAP program. And I was allowed, I was allowed to do that, and so I did.
My, my dad, my dad was there.
And one of the things that I remember coming out of that meeting, and I tried to do it as, even though I have been the EMC agent, I tried to do it as equitably as I could. But one of the things I remember coming out of that was after that presentation, one of the council members looked at the other council members and said, "I'm sorry, but I don't want to buy an insurance policy." And that's why it's still where it's at. So, you know, I think we need to make the distinction between what we've had in the past is an insurance policy and what we're intending, or what we're looking at buying here really is not. It's a, it's a very legitimate way to form coverage for a municipality, but I'm not sure it's for us. And that's, that's where...
I also seen you trying to get a paying workers' comp when I was on the city council. So there's all that too. And we can go into more details if we need.
No, explain that to me, because I don't agree. I don't think that happened.
Christine Smith, should we get her here and have her share her opinions? She had to go to court to get that settled out.
Well, that was, that was a case that was beyond our workers' compensation.
Right.
It was beyond our workers' compensation. EMC was a different public credit company, that's all it is. No, no, I'm not taking any questions. On the, on the, on the workers' compensation, and I'm not sure you understand the accommodation we have with EMC about how our, and this is on the city side with the firefighters and the EMS. There was a time when we got audited and the auditor got things messed up. And we ended up, remember that large, huge work comp premium we got or premium increase we got? And we, we sat down with EMC and settled that so that when one of our EMS guys was on the fire truck, he was not on the EMS payroll. So thereby they could, they could lower that premium so we weren't paying the high premium rate for firefighters. And so, I mean, I don't know if that accommodation is in your work comp policy, but if it's not, it needs to be.
It is. You can dictate whatever your, if, if wanted to be documented, I don't represent the work comp carrier, but as long as you have documentation that represents the actual hours that are put involved, EMC and fire, you can put those out and, and basically reduce the, the amount they're paying because you're reducing the payroll of fire.
Okay.
That's very common practice.
Okay. I guess I'm at a point, is there any other questions or comments? Anybody? You know, I think we've looked at, at these premiums. In total, when both the city and the utility are looked at here, it looks like, it looks like the ICAP premium is considerably more. And I guess before I call for a vote here, Ash, do you have a recommendation here? I mean, to me, your recommendation would be, would be very helpful.
Well, I do like what Ryan just did. And I think Ryan, I've been working to this for decades now, so we seem to like. That's what Ryan was asking for, is what I'm gonna hand it to you. That's very much what Ryan came to the conclusion, which he has at front, giving another one. That's really how I look at things. It lay out after we had all the demonstration from EMC and from ICAP. This is the conclusion, and this will be given to the council, city council too. The bottom line for EMC, if they combine, would be 198,350. The bottom line for ICAP, if we combine, would be 219,781. That's really what Ryan was asking for. And I would like to share it with utilities.
I'd like to show anything that's different in between these two things because I know there's a lot of difference.
And if, yeah, if you're gonna go through and compare apples to apples, it will be highs and lows and all this stuff. But that's really where we at with the financing. So we need to decide here's the, this thing for...
Okay.
I wanna thank ICAP for working hard throughout the last few months with everybody, with us. I wanna thank Casey on the phone. I want to thank EMC for working hard with us too. We both deserve our respect and appreciation. And the decision we're making tonight between EMC and the city should not affect our relationship. It's one town, one people working to benefit the city for still.
Pat, do you have a recommendation here?
Well, with my experience working with EMC, I've been very satisfied, I guess. This goes back to last summer when we had a hailstorm go through and we needed, we needed somebody to come out here and look at our buildings, see how bad they really were. And somebody did. And then throughout the process, this individual kept calling, excuse me, kept calling and asking how things were going. He put an eye on things just, and things went really smooth. I was, I was very happy the way it went. It was very little work on my part and that's my, well, that's about all I got, I guess, I would have put forward for that. It's just, I'm happy with the way things are going now.
Okay.
Yeah, Ash, thank you for reaching out to try to get competitive numbers. I did call the city of Greenfield, the city of Panar to try to get, ask about what they're thinking. Their premiums are gonna go up and it's very much in line with... Because Manus is a full-time employee between both sides of the city and utilities using our neighbors' dollars to pay for it. And so I don't, you know, nobody likes, nobody like, I don't like insurance. That's just me. But you have to have it.
Yeah.
So I guess I didn't want to, you know, it's like you said, you wanted to see two numbers and you wanted to see is this reasonable after this claim? Well, our neighbors from towns are seeing the same thing. So we've got two bids and like I said, I mean, it's a full-time employee across two entities. If that's gonna sting, you know, we're gonna have to come up with that money someplace.
Hey, I will, I'll make the motion that we accept the renewal quote from United Risk. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Taken by Craig. Proceed to vote. Brian?
Yes.
I vote aye. Craig?
Aye.
And Kim?
Yes.
I too want to thank the agents in the room. I know this is difficult. I've been there myself. This is very, very difficult stuff and it takes long hours. And whoever says that an agent has an easy time is wrong because it's hard work and a lot of time and effort goes into it. So I appreciate your effort on everybody.
Oh, I appreciate you guys too.
Say. Okay, we stand adjourned.